This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the April 19, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to formally call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. If you would please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on board docs for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then mute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session this evening prior to our meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor. This is opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address the board? Yes, sir. If you'd please come to the microphone and give us your name and address. Good evening. And make sure that's turned on and the little green light is showing.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Charles Eichner, 831 America's Drive, Allentown. Here tonight, I wanted to discuss the zoning ordinance, Section 350-44, Section 3, which is a maximum of one boat, camper, or recreational vehicle associated with one utility trailer, with the transportation of such recreational vehicle may be parked on a residential lot, provided such vehicle should be parked behind the principal use and meet the side and rear yard and accessory private garage. So I bring this up tonight because I have been cited for camper that I parked in my driveway. I've been a resident for about 20 years now. I've always had some sort of trailer, utility, camper, whatever it be, on my driveway with no issues. We go throughout the township here. We can see many instances of some that have spanned five, 10, 15, 20 years. So in this particular instance, I spoke with Tom Harper. We had a conversation about that. I expressed those exact things. And that I did not agree with it. I felt that it was an overstretch on the township's part. Seems like a homeowners' association type of rules, not something that a township should be involved with, in my opinion. His response to that, well, like I said, I expressed my concerns about other instances taking place. His response basically was that he only deals with complaints. He does not proactively go out and look for and address such issues. So somebody apparently complained about my camper. Now, I find that to be extremely unfair and unjust. If we have rules on the books, they should be enforced equally upon everybody, and it shouldn't be reactive. It should be proactive. And if we don't have the personnel to do that or the time and energy to do that, then maybe this is a rule that should be considered to be removed. So that's what I would like to ask this evening, that that rule be removed. I would like you to consider that.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to the board's attention. I will ask our township manager if we could take that under advisement. Is that something that you could assist the resident with?
Yes.
Okay. We have your information, your name and address, and we could have our township manager get back to you with further information. If that's something the board needs to consider to revise, it would have to be taken up in a public meeting with legal review in the future.
Okay. What was the last part? I'm sorry.
It would have to go through legal review to change our ordinance, and then it would come before a public meeting also.
Understood.
But our manager, Tom Petrucci, will get back with you.
Okay.
To give you details.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens? Sure. Come on up to the microphone, please. Please state your name and address.
Dave Torrey, 1351 Deerfield Drive. This is just a general question. Do we know on a regular basis what type of activity is going on in the warehouses in our township? I'm thinking, for instance, I went past the radio warehouse on Cracker Sport Road. There are a bunch of cars there. Do we know what goes on in that building? As far as it, is it a distribution facility? What are the materials being stored and distributed from there? Do we have on all the warehouses, do we have a regular knowledge of what's going on?
That's a good question. I will defer to our township manager.
The answer is yes. We would know based on the planning process that took place to allow the warehouses to be in operation. So that would include potentially conditional uses or as well as through the permitting process, whether it's a building permit or a zoning permit. So yes, generally, we do. And we do require them to identify any materials that would be considered hazardous as well.
Well, that's a state, that's a, I was involved in hazardous waste and hazardous materials for 44 years, and I know that's a state requirement as well.
Correct.
But I'm talking about general activity in a warehouse. And the reason I bring that up is I've talked to fire people as well as LEI associates who have a warehouse at Airport Road in 329. We talked about, you know, these warehouses are built for spec. Sometimes there's like 25% of space is used for one commodity. A new buyer, a new renter comes in for the other, say, 50, would bring different materials in. And we're talking at our transportation tour of the LEI warehouse up there at 329. And the LEI warehouse official says, you know, you can have general items in there, but then if you put teddy bears in there, you overwhelm the sprinkler system. So I would think that we need to know on a regular basis what type of activity or what type of materials are in each one of those warehouses that we have in our township. And if there's a change, you know, a different client with different materials, then the warehouse should be required to update the township.
Yeah. So in a specific instance of where the conditional use approval was granted, they would have to identify their activities. So if those activities changed, then that would necessitate coming back to the township for an additional approval.
Well, would a conditional use be to just store and receive materials? I'm talking about having a type of material, you know, is there a latex paint in there? Are there teddy bears in there? Are there lawnmowers in there? You know, this is the type of thing that I would think we would want to know.
So anytime there's a change in tenant, we require a zoning permit. So during that zoning permit review, we review materials that they're going to be storing. And then if it warrants review by our fire marshal, we walk it over through the proper channels. He reviews it. If there's additional upgrades to the sprinklers required, we notify the new tenant that they require sprinkler permits and upgrades, and it goes through that process. So we monitor changes of use.
Yeah, okay. Because I know warehouses are always, someone, a client might come in for two years with 50% of the space, and then it's, that client leaves, and maybe somebody regrets 10% or 25% or whatever. As long as we're concerned on what's going on in these warehouses.
It is certainly a challenge sometimes, but we are on top of it. And through our zoning permit processes, how we keep track of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to approach the board? Dave, is there anyone online with a comment or question? No one? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, we have our approval of our meeting minutes from our April 5, 2023 meeting. They've been distributed to the board for your review. Are there any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation regarding National Donate Life Month. We have a proclamation prepared. I'm just going to briefly summarize it, and then I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy for his comment. Proclamation, National Donate Life Month, whereas approximately 104,000 Americans are currently on the national transplant waiting list, more than 5,000 men, women, and children in Gift of Life donor programs region are awaiting a life-saving transplant, whereas another person is added to the waiting list every nine minutes, and on average, 17 people die because the organs they need are not donated in time. Whereas since its founding in 1974, Gift of Life donor program has been a world leader in saving and enhancing the lives in those of need of organ and tissue transplantation, and is committed to increasing public awareness of the importance of becoming a registered donor. Therefore, South Whitehall Township proclaims April 2023 as Donate Life Month in South Whitehall. I encourage all citizens to consider becoming an organ and tissue donor by placing the organ donor designation on their driver's license, state ID card, or registering online at donorsone.org and sharing this decision with their family. Commissioner Kennedy, if you have any comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I appreciate South Whitehall Township realizing that April is National Donate Life Month. I just want to tell a quick personal story, and it is certainly a personal decision to become a donor. 31 years ago, I lost my son in a car accident coming home from Penn State. At that, he was 19 years old. At that time, my wife and I decided to donate. Unfortunately, he did die at the scene, so we weren't able to donate organs, but 45 different individuals, 45 different individuals received tissue from my son. About eight months or eight years ago, my nephew was killed in a car accident, and he was on life support, and he was able to donate six organs. Again, I'm not looking for the sympathy part of it, but there's nothing greater to see a kid 10, 12, 15 years old, or an adult for that matter, you know, with a second chance of life, having received a new tissue donor, a cornea. It is absolutely fantastic to see that. I've been very involved with Gift of Life in the Lehigh Valley and Philadelphia for 30 years. I have the opportunity to coach the 12 and under basketball team, and every one of those kids has had a organ or tissue transplant. And it is absolutely, you know, unbelievable to see these kids out there running around. So I appreciate South Whitehall looking into the proclamation and April as Donate Life Month, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And consider donation on your license. Talk to your family. Just like you said, you can't take it with you. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story, Commissioner Kennedy. Moving on to presentations, we have a retirement this evening. I'd like to ask George Severa if you'd just come up to the microphone here. Thank you. So it's my honor to recognize. And before I read the proclamation, I also want to thank your family for the sacrifice that I know that they have made over the years.
They have.
For you to be able to give of your time to our community. What I have before me this evening is a proclamation to recognize George Severa, who is retiring with 42 years of service from Greenwald's Fire Company. Our proclamation reads, "Distinguished Service Award to George Severa for 42 years of service to South Whitehall Township. Board of Commissioners and the citizens of South Whitehall would like to take this time to recognize you, George Severa, for your 42 years of volunteer service, beginning in 1981, as you worked your way up through the ranks from firefighter to assistant chief and serving as safety officer. South Whitehall Township applauds your accomplishments and thanks you for your sacrifice throughout the many years. We honor you, George Severa, and are truly grateful for your outstanding service to this great community. Congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for a job well done."
It's been an honor to serve the township. I was looking back on my phone. I actually took a picture of the night that I was, the notes from the night that I was voted in, September 14, 1981. And I'll never forget that day because I remember the letter came for Fund Drive. Didn't have a lot of money at the time because I was laid off. I thought, I've given my time. Hmm. 42 years later. Thank you so much.
Well, don't go away. We'd like to take a photo with you.
Where do you want me?
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have, thank you again. Agenda Item 7, we have a conditional use hearing this evening. I will ask for our alternate solicitor, Attorney Lisa Pereira. Please join us.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to open the conditional use hearing for 4741 Chapman's Road, the Flex Warehouse Facility. What I would like to do, and actually, I don't see the applicant in the audience yet. They're out there. Hold on just one second. Oh, they're there. I think we have everyone now. At this time, I was just indicating that we were opening the hearing. And before we begin, I would like to take this time for anyone who is going to be testifying this evening to please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in by our court reporter.
And we do have the one witness by WebEx.
Understood. I don't, are we able to pull him up at this point? Okay. Maybe what we'll do is we'll have him sworn in separately. It'll might, it'll just be easier to do it that way. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I am going to turn over the mic to Mr. Greg Adams, and he is going to give a brief overview of the application.
Thank you, Lisa. This is an application for conditional use approval, the warehouse use at 4741 Chapman's Road. The applicant proposes a warehouse in distribution use within the existing warehouse that proposes a greater amount of traffic than the previously approved warehouse in distribution use. The subject property is served by public water and sewer and is zoned IC1, industrial commercial, one special height limitation. River Bend South Whitehall Properties 1 LLC is the owner and applicant. At their January 19, February 16, and March 16 meetings, the Planning Commission reviewed 4741 Chapman's Road Flex Warehouse Facility 2022, Conditional Use Review 2022-601. At the March 16 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended conditional use approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following condition. One, that the applicant agrees to conduct a post-occupancy study of the Chapman's Road PA Route 309 intersection after the facility is open, fully staffed, and during the school year. If the township identifies unacceptable delays in queuing, it shall be the obligation of the applicant to provide analysis to the township and PennDOT and pursue all upgrades requested by PennDOT in accordance with the March 16, 2023 PennDOT Highway Occupancy Permit Application 167029, Supplement Number 3, Cycle Number 6 Review Letter. Based on discussions at the Planning Commission and afterwards, staff recommends the following conditions. Number 2, a post-occupancy study include the 4741 Chapman's Road driveway counts, as well as Chapman's Road PA Route 309 intersection counts. Hours of the study shall include the AM peak, PM peak, and afternoon shift change. Three, that the applicant address to the satisfaction township engineer the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida in his review letter dated March 8, 2023. Four, that the applicant address to the satisfaction of township order and sewer engineer the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart in his review dated March 13, 2023. And five, that the applicant shall comply with all conditions of approval to 4741 Chapman's Road Conditional Use Application 2019-601. For background, postcards notifying the owners of all real property within 300 feet of the subject parcel, as well as those who had previously requested notice, were mailed on, sorry, April 6, 2023. Written notice of the hearing was sent to developer and property owner on April 6, 2023. The property was posted on April 11, 2023 with a notice at conspicuous spots on the perimeter of the property, and the hearing was advertised for two successive weeks on March 29 and April 5, 2023, in the Allentown Morning Call Legal Ads. Thank you.
At this time, I will turn over the hearing to Mr. Rowley, the applicant's attorney.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Dan Rowley. I'm here with the law firm of Saul Ewing, representing the applicant. I do have some exhibit packets that I can hand up. I may?
Very good.
So tonight's conditional use application concerns the property of 4741 Chapman's Road here in South Whitehall Township. The property is currently improved with a approximately 100-square-foot warehouse, parking, stormwater, and other related improvements. The existing property and warehouse was granted conditional use approval by this board in November of 2019. Our current application seeks to, seeks approval for the new proposed tenant, which is a Walgreens fulfillment center with a higher employee occupancy rate than was previously anticipated. So we're essentially seeking to amend our previous conditional use approval. The only substantive difference between tonight's application and that 2009 approval or 2019 approval is traffic. Essentially, the traffic amounts to less truck traffic than previously anticipated under the prior approval and more car traffic. We appeared here in this room in front of the Township Planning Commission three times, January, February, and March. At the March Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission issued a recommendation of approval of our conditional use. Chapman's Road, which is the road the property is located on, is a state-owned road, so we were required to apply for a supplemental highway occupancy permit, which we submitted for that permit. We submitted a, we submitted our new, I should say, traffic impact assessment. They have reviewed that, PennDOT has, as well as all of our materials, and they have subsequently issued and approved highway occupancy permit for the proposed use. Just a few housekeeping items before I bring up my first witness. The conditional use application that was submitted can be found at Exhibit A1 in your packets, and also the deed for the property, which evidences are standing to bring the application, can be found at Exhibit A2. I have three witnesses with me here tonight. Kevin Horvath is going to testify to the site plans. Eric Friedman is a representative from Walgreens. He will be testifying virtually. And then Scott Pastursky is the traffic engineer for the prop, or for the project. So unless there are any questions for me, I'll bring up Mr. Horvath.
No questions.
Good evening.
Mr. Horvath, can you state your name and business address for the record?
Sure. My name is Kevin Horvath. I work for Stone Consulting Engineers at 28 Boulevard in Bethlehem.
And turning to Exhibit A3. Turning to Exhibit A3, is this a copy of your CV?
Yes, it is.
And can you just describe for the board briefly your educational and professional background?
Sure. I graduated from Penn State with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, Lehigh University with a Master's in Business Administration. I have been practicing as a civil engineer for over 25 years with, primarily with Keystone Consulting Engineers.
And have you previously been accepted as an expert in engineering land development and zoning in front of similar boards in Pennsylvania?
I have, yes.
And have you been accepted as an expert in those subjects in front of this board here?
Yes.
I would offer Mr. Horvath as an expert in engineering land development and zoning. Mr. Horvath, are you generally familiar with the property that's the subject of this application and the general area?
Yes, I am.
Turning to Exhibit A4, is this a aerial photograph that shows the existing conditions on the property?
Yes, it is.
And can you describe for the board the existing conditions on the property?
Sure. The project sites located on the west side of Chapman's Road, there's an existing approximately 102,000-square-foot building on the site, along with passenger car parking, truck loading and unloading areas, as well as a remote, call it a remote parking area toward the north side of the lot, intended for a combination of truck parking and passenger vehicle car parking.
And turning to Exhibit A5, is this a copy of the record plan that was approved by conditional use in November of 2019 and then subsequently constructed?
Yes.
And did you design these plans for the prior approval?
I did.
And does this record plan reflect the existing conditions on the property today?
It does with a couple of minor differences, primarily in pavement markings. You'll see on this Exhibit A5, there's the remote parking area that I referred to, which is striped for trailer and truck parking. That has not yet been striped yet because under the current proposal, it would be restriped for passenger vehicle parking, as well as a portion of the truck loading areas adjacent to the rear of the building would be converted from truck to car parking. The only other difference would be the drive aisle toward the northwest corner of the building. It's labeled as a 24-foot-wide drive aisle. It was initially intended for two-way vehicular traffic, and at the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the Public Safety Commission, we had revised that to be a single directional traffic heading from the car parking area to the south and in a northerly direction to the rear of the building. Those are the only changes from the approved plan.
And turning to Exhibit A6, is this a copy of the conditional use decision from that 2019 approval?
Yes.
And in the prior decision, did the board find that the warehouse distribution use for the property met all the conditional use standards for, or under Township Code?
That's correct.
And when this prior conditional use approval was granted, did the property owner have a tenant in mind?
They, they did not. It was a spec building.
Okay. And is the building currently occupied at all?
Approximately a third of the 102,000-square-foot building is occupied.
And that they're occupied by Sari Robot, which is a kitchen utensils company? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And Sari Robot was issued a use and occupancy permit to occupy the building under the prior approval? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And is it your understanding that the applicant was approached by a prospective tenant, Walgreens, regarding use? regarding using the remaining space in the building?
That's my understanding, yes.
And we'll get into specifics later, but is it your understanding, I should say, later witnesses will testify to it in more depth. But is it your understanding that the needs for Walgreens regarding parking in terms of tra, of traffic are different than what was approved in 2019?
Yes, correct.
And as a result of the change in the nature of the traffic, did the township staff request that we file the subject application to essentially amend that prior approval?
They did, yes.
And are there any changes proposed to the property as a result of Walgreens occupying the space?
Only as I had described previously, restriping a portion of what was initially intended for trailer and truck parking or passenger car parking for employees.
And turning to Exhibit A7, is this a copy of the proposed site plan for the property?
Yes, it is.
And you described to the board the, the changes that are reflected in this site plan, correct?
Yes.
So there are no changes to the existing building or additional impervious coverage proposed, correct?
No, that's correct.
And turning to Exhibit A8, is this a project narrative prepared by the project teams that describe in detail how the project meets all the conditional use standards under the code?
Yes, it is.
And again, this board previously found that this building met all the conditional use standards, correct?
Yes.
And the planning commission also unanimously recommended approval of the application?
Yes.
And at the March meeting, did the Township zoning officer confirm that, in her opinion, we complied with all the conditional use standards?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll leave it to the discretion of the board. I can have Kevin walk through all of the conditional use standards in Exhibit A8, or you can take it as testimony in the record already written.
Yes.
We can do that. Okay. Kevin, can you take a minute and walk the board through the conditional use standards as outlined in Exhibit A8?
Sure. In the document dated January 27, revised February 13, 2023, it outlines responses to both the general standards for conditional uses and also the specific standards for conditional uses. I'll start with the general standards. It refers to zoning ordinance Section 350-18B1. Subsection A states, "Design characteristics, maintenance, and operation of the use are such that public health, safety, and general welfare will be protected. Reasonable consideration is given to, among other things, the character and suitability of the location in question, zoning district, traffic, safety, and road capacities, et cetera, et cetera." And our response being that the existing development and the existing and proposed warehousing and distribution uses are consistent with the light industrial operations contemplated by the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan for the industrial commercial one zoning district in which the property is located. The site provides direct access to a collector road, Chapman's Road, and proximity to an arterial road, Route 309, that can adequately accommodate anticipated traffic impacts of the existing and proposed uses as demonstrated in a submitted transportation impact assessment report. Through thoughtful design, significant investment by the applicant, the existing development stands as an example of an attractive environmentally minded development consistent with the quality and character to which the surrounding area aspires. Through the, through the extension of public utility services to a previously unserved area of the township, the existing development may have increased surrounding property values. During its more than 10-year presence, owner in numerous facilities in the Lehigh Valley, the applicant's commitment to long-term property ownership and high operations and maintenance standards has earned a reputation as a good corporate citizen and neighbor. I need a glass of water. I'm going to go through this whole thing. Subsection B, "Consistent with the community development objectives articulated in this chapter pursuant to Section 606 of the MPC. The existing development and proposed uses are consistent with the community development objectives of the zoning ordinance, Section 350-03, as follows. Through utilization of adequate existing roadway infrastructure, by preserving and protecting existing wetlands, streams, and other natural resources on the property, by promoting uses that will facilitate safe and efficient movement of goods, by providing a pedestrian interconnection to the newly constructed public sidewalk along Chapman's Road, and bike racks for employees to encourage the use of multimodal transportation, through the extension of public utility services to previously unserved area of the township, and by strengthening the township tax base through significant investment by the applicant, resulting in the creation of a high-quality development that will generate hundreds of well-paying jobs." Section C, "Consistent with the statement of purpose articulated for the district in which the use is proposed and promotes the harmonious and orderly development of such zoning district." Again, this is the industrial commercial IC1 zoning district. It's intended to provide suitable space for modest-sized light industrial establishments and those commercial activities that are compatible with the industrial activities according to zoning ordinance, Section 350-22C1. At 100, 2,250 square feet with a maximum of 24 loading docks, the existing development is modest in size compared to typical modern warehousing and distribution facilities. The existing warehouse, distribution facility for kitchen utensils, and proposed pharmaceutical distribution uses are consistent with the intended light industrial uses. Subsection D, "The development is consistent with the South Whitehall Township Comprehensive Plan and Official Map. The existing development and proposed use are consistent with the current version and draft update of the Comprehensive Plan and Official Map as follows. It is located in an area of the township designated for light industrial uses. Its relatively low development density of 40% impervious coverage, 40 to 50% recommended, direct access to a collector road in proximity to an arterial road that can adequately accommodate anticipated traffic, and provides landscaped buffer yard along the Chapman's Road front edge of the subject property." That was it. Subsection E, "Compatible with the character and type of development existing in the area that surrounds the site and permitted in the underlying zoning district in terms of the size, scale, height, and bulk of the proposed uses, size, shape, and placement of building and other structures. Existing development and proposed use are compatible with the numerous existing industrial uses in the surrounding area, for example, 84 lumber at 4732 Chapman's Road, HSA mechanical at 4764 Chapman's Road, and are permitted by conditional use approval in the industrial IC1 zoning district. The development and proposed uses meet or exceed dimensional requirements and other applicable standards of the zoning ordinance as it relates to size, scale, height, and bulk of their uses and the size, shape, and placement of the buildings and other structures. Additionally, the development is significantly less intense than allowed in the IC1 zoning district when considering impervious coverage, whereby 75% impervious coverage is allowed and 40% is existing on the site. The development is reflective of sound engineering and land development design and construction principles, practices, and techniques. It was designed and constructed in accordance with South White, South Whitehall Township SALDO and standard construction documents and other regulatory agency standards and regulations as evidenced by approval of the land development plans and subsequent issuance of an occupancy permit for the existing use by the township. The development will provide safe and efficient access to roads and will not create traffic congestion, hazardous traffic conditions, or excessive traffic volumes. The submitted TIA for the project demonstrates that the development will provide safe and efficient access to roads and that the existing and proposed uses will not create traffic congestion, hazardous traffic conditions, or excessive traffic volumes in accordance with Township and PennDOT standards, as would be, can, change that to as, has been confirmed through the issuance of the Highway Occupancy Permit by PennDOT for the proposed site driveways. In addition, the applicant has widened Chapman's Road along the front edge of the property to facilitate safe ingress and egress for the existing development and at the Grammas intersection for improved traffic flow." All right. We are moving on to subsection I, demonstrating that the development will provide continuity of existing circulation systems, including road sidewalks and trails. The development provides direct vehicle access to Chapman's Road, an existing collector road, by means of two-site driveways and pedestrian access to the site via an internal sidewalk system with a direct connection to the newly constructed sidewalk along Chapman's Road. The development will provide for adequate environmental controls and performance standards to minimize noise, vibration, glare, heat, odor, smoke, dust, fume, vapor gases, air emissions, water emissions, and outdoor storage. Aspects of the existing development, such as building orientation, the buffer yard along Chapman's Road, and the height, placement, and shielding of site lighting were designed to minimize impacts of noise, vibration, and glare on surrounding roadways and properties. Additionally, the applicant will ensure that operations of existing and proposed tenants will comply with performance standards of zoning ordinance Section 27-511 through 27-1514, I'm sorry, 1511 through 1514, including noise control, vibration, air pollution, and odors, and light and glare control. Operations of the existing and proposed uses do not involve outdoor storage. Sub K, "The development, each conditional use shall adhere to the minimum standards specified by the particular, for the particular use by the applicable regulations of this chapter. The existing development and proposed use will meet or exceed dimensional requirements of the IC1 zoning district and other applicable township standards." All of the specific uses for the proposed use, the development will comply with, and I will go through them individually now. This takes us to subsection zoning ordinance, Section 350-48W1E lowercase i, "Specific Standards for Warehousing and Distribution." Transportation Impact Study, subsection one. It is refer to the Enclosed Traffic Impact Assessment, which concludes that the proposed development will have a minimal impact on traffic on surrounding roadways and adjacent intersections. Subsection two, "The proposed use shall provide sufficient off-street trailer parking for pre- and post-loading and unloading activities." I would direct your attention to the parking and loading space tabulation, which is provided on the site plan in your packet. And that demonstrates that the numbers of oversized parking and trailer spaces in equal to or greater numbers than required by the ordinance. In addition, the proposed tenant has advised that the applicant, based on experience owning and operating numerous similar facilities, that proposed off-street trailer parking accommodations depicted on the plan will be more than sufficient to meet its needs. You can jump in with questions anytime.
You can certainly summarize as.
I, I mean, the information is what it is. I could read every other word or something to speed things along, but I can't really summarize on the fly, other than to say it complies. Off-street trailer parking spaces shall be located on concrete or similar deformation-resistant surfaces. There are concrete in the loading dock areas, concrete along the trailer parking spaces, so we would comply with subsection three. The proposed use shall provide sufficient off-street parking for tractor-trailers arriving during non-business hours. The current plan does not include a gate or other restricted entry into the truck loading and parking areas, which provide numbers of oversized and trailer parking spaces equal to or in greater numbers than required by the ordinance. Should a gate or other access control measure be installed, applicant will ensure that a minimum of four oversized parking spaces within the 10-space truck parking area and at least two additional truck queuing spaces along the northerly site driveway will remain accessible. In addition, the proposed tenant has advised the applicant, based on experience owning and operating similar facilities, I've already gone over this, that they're going to be more than sufficient to suit the existing and proposed uses. Proposed use shall provide sufficient off-street queuing space to prevent vehicles from queuing on the roads. Refer to Response D above. Written plans, checklists, and other measures to deal with the outdoor storage of hazardous materials. The applicant does not anticipate outdoor storage of hazardous materials at the facility. However, in the unlikely event that such materials are stored outdoors, the property, the applicant, its future tenants will comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. Submission of a truck routing map. We have submitted the truck routing map. It's in your packet of items that you have in front of you. Submission of an engineered access intersection plans and signage package, that is also in your packet. Submission of a written description of strategies that will be implemented to reduce wait times and free up internal parking at the facility. Again, the current plan does not include a gate or other access restriction. In addition, there are measures that would be determined and implemented if deemed necessary at the time of application for a building permit for each tenant. In addition, just as a, as an aside, the proposed tenant intends to stagger its shift times so that there's an hour between the outgoing and the incoming shift, which would reduce traffic congestion during that period of time. Submission of a written description of the strategy to assure that trucks can access the facility. Again, no gate. If there is a gate installed in the future, measures will be taken to ensure that trucks can still access the site and will not queue or otherwise be required to wait off-site for access. Site shall have a minimum of one secure truck parking space, and the site plan identifies that toward the northeast corner of the site. Site will have driver amenities in each building. There is a, there are 24 loading docks proposed. As such, the building will require and include a designated waiting area, location of which to be determined, which will include at minimum six seats, one four-person table, as noted on the site layout plan, in addition to a restroom. Submission of plans or description identifying pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. As noted earlier, there's internal sidewalk connecting to a newly constructed sidewalk along Chapman's Road. There are bicycle racks to be located along the front of the building or at main building entrances, all as depicted on the site layout plan. Public transit stop. In an email dated December 12th, 2018, Lanta indicated that they do not have plans, nor do they anticipate providing for a public transit stop at or near the building. However, a pedestrian connection between the building and the public sidewalk is provided in the event that they decide otherwise. Sidewalk along the perimeter, we've discussed that already. An employee gathering space internal to the site shall be at least 1,200 square feet. You can see on the west side of the building, between the building and the turnpike, there's a little grayed out hatched area that's intended for some sort of an outdoor gathering area for use by employees in accordance with this section. Submission of a written description of strategies that the facility will use to shift truck traffic from the most congested peak hours to off-peak hours. I'll read this all the way through, just because this will be a discussion item later. But the proposed tenant will operate two off-peak shifts that will run from 6:00 AM to 2:30 PM and 3:30 PM to 12:00 AM, which will cause most of the vehicular traffic generated by the proposed use to occur outside of peak hours of the adjacent roadway. The applicant also refers the township to the traffic study noting that AM peak, AM and PM peak truck trips for this facility are estimated at five and three respectively, fewer than what was previously approved. And therefore will not add considerable congestion to the immediate road network. Additionally, the proposed tenant, that would be Walgreens, has advised the applicant that, based on its experience owning and operating numerous similar facilities, the proposed use will generate truck traffic at a significantly lower rate than estimated by the TIA, and that due to the extended hours of operation of the proposed use, approximately half of all truck trips will occur around 10:00 PM, well after the peak hour of the adjacent roadway. Subsection 16, " Submission of a written description of strategies that will be used to prevent trucks from idling." Applicant will provide truck driver waiting areas, as we described previously. They will also provide signage prohibiting idling in accordance with state law. They will encourage future tenants to establish policies to minimize idling. They will provide utility connections for trucks waiting at the facility. The locations of these to be determined based on tenant need. But that brings me to the end of our project narrative.
And Kevin, one final question before I let you grab a drink of water, but I think you made reference to this earlier. But was the site plan also reviewed by the Township's Public Safety Committee?
Yes, it was.
And did they approve of the site plan?
They did.
I have no further questions for Mr. Horvath.
Does the board have any questions of this witness?
I have just one question regarding the Lanta paragraph that you referenced.
Yes.
That letter was dated December of 2018. There were no tenants at that time, of course. So with this new use, there will be significantly more tenants than I believe had been expected if it had been a warehouse. Has there been any consideration by the applicant to get back in touch with Lanta to see if there would be a need?
There was not. We could certainly do that. But in Lanta's response to us, there really was no mention to, you know, employee count or anything. It's really kind of insignificant in their grand scheme of their, of their routes as they're planning them. But if the board would like, we can.
So I've been in contact with Lanta regarding some corridors in the township, and they are looking at servicing. are looking at servicing this warehouse and the three other warehouses. So it's on their radar, and we're keeping them abreast of tenants as they come in. So it's under consideration.
Very good. Thank you.
Actually considering. So that is an update to that.
That is good to know.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, the site has direct access, there are sidewalks, there are interconnections with the internal pedestrian walkways and things, so it is set up to accommodate if they were to decide to put a stop nearby.
Very good. Thank you.
I just have a question. This might be best for our alternate solicitor, but under the specific standards for warehousing and distribution, item 15, the submission of the written description of strategies that the facility will use to shift truck traffic for most of the congested peak hours, traffic to off-peak hours. I noticed the applicant listed the two off-peak shifts. If those shifts were to change, would the applicant have to come back to us and amend their conditional use application?
Based on their testimony that they are presenting to the board tonight, and that factoring into your decision, if there would be, the applicant would be required to provide that? And would the applicant is here, would they have any objection to incorporating that into any approval?
Yeah, I mean, we have to substantially conform with what we're testifying here tonight, so.
Yeah, what I'm just asking, would, would you be amenable to that if those shifts were to change that you come back to us and?
Yeah, I, that's, yeah. I think we, we could do that. Well, and my next witness is a representative from Walgreens, and he's going to testify to that, so he may be able to, you know, answer that question better. But again, we're going to have to comply with what we're testifying here tonight.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this juncture, before we move on to your next witness, is there any member of the public who may have a question for Mr. Horvath before we continue? Hearing none.
Thank you.
So my next witness is Mr. Eric Friedman, and he is testifying virtually.
Hi, good evening.
Swear him in at this point in time. Can you hear us, sir?
I do. Thank you. I do.
Mr. Friedman, can you state your full name and business address for the record?
Yes, my name is Eric Friedman, address 200 Wilmot Road in Deerfield, Illinois.
And by whom are you employed?
I'm employed by Walgreens.
And how long have you been employed by Walgreens?
15 years.
And what is your position with Walgreens?
I'm the senior manager for the architectural team in our property division.
And in your position at Walgreens, are you typically involved in similar zoning land development applications?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the property located at 4741 Chapman's Road here in South Whitehall Township?
Yes, I am.
And has Walgreens entered into a lease agreement with the applicant for the use of the property as a distribution slash warehouse use under township code?
That's correct. We do have an executed lease.
And can you describe to the board how Walgreens intends to utilize the property?
Certainly. Thank you. We are looking to open this facility as one of several across the country that are being utilized to fulfill pharmacy orders at the patient level for our retail pharmacy customers. Essentially, our employees at this facility will be filling the same orders that normally would have otherwise been filled at a local pharmacy counter and within a Walgreens store. We operate these facilities in partnership with our wholesale distributor who distributes our pharmaceuticals daily to our retail stores. We locate the facility nearby to their operations such that they deliver bulk medications to the facility each morning, as referenced earlier by Mr. Horvath, around 6:00 AM incoming shipment of one to two trucks. We then fill customer orders at this facility all day long, over two shifts. At the, towards the end of the second shift, we have outbound trucks from that wholesale partner who will take the outbound completed orders. And the next day, when they make their daily rounds to our retail stores, we'll deliver them on our behalf for the stores to have available for customer pickup at the counter.
And when are the majority of truck deliveries anticipated at the facility?
The majority of our truck traffic is the daily truck traffic in partnership with that wholesale partner that we use. Their inbound morning shipment is usually around 6:00 AM. Their outbound pickup each evening is between 10:00 to 11:00, but normally near 10:00 PM. We might have additional trucks during the week for FedEx office supplies, for waste pickup from our waste management partner, not necessarily on a daily basis. Those might be anytime midday, but those are not scheduled or regular like our intended primary receiving and shipments.
And how many employees are proposed as a part of your use?
So our employees per day will be in the range of 180 per day. We're anticipating two shifts. Each shift is equally staffed, around 80 people. That gets you to 160 individuals. The other 20 are front office staff primarily that don't work morning versus evening shift. They, they work regular office hours midday. So we've got 180 onsite per day. The total staffing, in order to make that operation work seven days a week, is up over 200 people. I believe we might be near 230 total employees to fill all of those shifts when we operate across seven days.
And there was mention of this by Mr. Horvath, but can you further explain to the board how the two shifts are scheduled?
Certainly. Our operating plan, to the best of my knowledge, has us operating roughly 6:00 to 2:30 for that first shift. We do hold intentionally a one-hour gap between shifts, and so second shift runs starting at 3:30 till around 11:30 with, with some individuals closing up the facility closer to midnight or 12:00 AM. But the standard shift times are 6:00 to 2:30, and then 3:30 to midnight, as currently planned.
And does the staggering of the shifts serve to limit parking needs?
Yes, it does. We typically, on our own, in pursuing new locations for this type of operation, we've been looking for facilities that can park somewhere around 30% over our typical shift count. I know here we have more parking than that. Here we have more parking than we would need, because the township does require parking to actually be equal to both of our shift counts, so that the parking is less of a concern for us at this facility. It also helps us alleviate demand inside the building on things like breakrooms, staff lockers, restroom count, et cetera, for our operational needs.
And in your experience with Walgreens, to summarize, just to confirm maybe your testimony, in your experience with Walgreens, the proposed parking is sufficient to meet your needs, correct?
It is. Yeah, this is more parking than we would have sought.
And in your experience, is the proposed truck loading docks and truck queuing spaces sufficient to meet your needs?
Yes, it is.
And in your opinion, will the proposed Walgreens fulfillment center be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare?
No, I, I don't believe so. We should be an asset to the community. We're investing quite a lot of money into this facility to operate from here. We plan to be here a long time. And as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're looking to bring in a sizable staff count in total to operate this facility, many of whom are coming from the immediate surrounding areas.
I have no further questions for Mr. Friedman.
Does the board have any questions of this witness?
Do you have a question, please? Eric, can you hear me?
I do.
Okay, great. I'm, I've read about the idling and how you're going to avoid that. Would you consider this more of a drop and hook or a live unload with your tractor trailers?
The morning and evening pickup that we discussed is more of a live unload or load. The, there will be a couple of trailers staged at our dock area used for our recycling program. We, we have a lot of outbound emptied cardboard and plastics that we do recycle with a partner. Those trailers stay docked at the door. Those are unhooked. There's not a tractor at the front of that vehicle. And when the trailer is full and ready for their cycler to pick up, they'll come hook up to haul that off. So most of our daily operations for the deliveries in the morning and the pickups in the evening, the truck, tractor trailer will stay fully assembled during the time that it's either being unloaded or loaded.
Okay, will you be using yard jockeys?
No, we, we don't have any remote trailers that need to be moved back and forth into position via yard jockeys.
Okay, and just one final question. Will you have an enforceable speed for trucks going in? I think usually when you dock, it's five miles per hour. I was just wondering if you're going to have anything like that, especially with the pedestrian and, and, you know, automobiles and so forth. Just asking.
Sure. I, yeah, I, I'm not personally familiar with how we would typically regulate or enforce that. I, I'm certain we'd be open to the township's recommendation, whether that's by way of signage on the property or signage on the building to remind our drivers of the mixed use of that part of the property.
And if I could just add to that, if you look at the very end of exhibit A1, we included some of the planage that's required to submit by code, and the last sheet of that is our site access signage exhibit. So those are the signs that we're proposing as a part of this parking lot. So there's, there's, I believe, two stop signs, some directional signs for trucks, and then, you know, areas of the parking lot where trucks are not permitted.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other board questions, sir?
Thank you. Yes. Eric, good evening. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
You mentioned that you're, you intend to be in the area for a long time. Are you at all at liberty to share with us the length of your current lease?
Sorry, I, I don't believe I'm at liberty to discuss lease terms for tonight's hearing.
Okay. All right. No problem. Again, just curiosity, is there any regulatory licensing or certification that's needed by some of your employees, if not all of them, in this particular location as far as handling of different kinds of medications?
Absolutely. Yeah. So we, as a, as a pharmacy, we regularly have interactions with the state boards of pharmacy. This facility is going to be filling prescriptions, not just to be dispensed within the state of Pennsylvania, but also some surrounding states, depending on the coverage of our partner wholesaler. Again, whatever stores they serve from their nearby facility, we plan to serve from this location. And so the state board of pharmacy has to approve the overall facility, along with the rules under which we operate the facility. That includes always having a licensed pharmacist in charge on property. That includes most of the fulfillment processes of filling customer prescriptions being performed either by licensed pharmacists or pharmacy techs, both of whom, both of which types of employment will occur within this facility. The board of pharmacy also sets requirements on the ratio of how many licensed pharmacists need to be onsite at any one point in time for the number of pharmacy techs you have doing their respective work. So it will be multiple pharmacists helping to, to manage multiple pharmacy techs doing the fulfillment work.
Great. Thank you. That answers my question very fully. Thank you.
Any other board questions? Any questions from the public?
If not, I can bring my next witness, which is Mr. Scott Pastersky.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you. Or S C O T T, last name P A S T E R S K I.
Mr. Pastersky, turning to exhibit A9, is this a copy of your CV?
Yes, it is.
And can you just briefly describe for the board your educational and professional background?
Sure. Regarding education, I'm a, I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Lehigh University, graduated in January of 2001. I've employed by Keystone Consulting Engineers since December of 2000, just over 22 years now, specializing in land development and traffic engineering.
And are you a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth PA?
Yes.
And have you previously been accepted as an expert in traffic engineering in front of similar boards in the Commonwealth?
Yes.
I would offer Mr. Pastersky as an expert in traffic engineering.
He's accepted.
Are you generally familiar with the property that's the subject of this application?
Yes.
And did you prepare a transportation impact assessment for the property, which analyzed the proposed use by Walgreens, as well as, sorry, robots' use of the property?
Yes, I did.
And turning to exhibit A10, is this a copy of that traffic impact assessment?
Yes.
And can you describe your findings?
Sure. Well, in completing the study, we looked at trip generation estimates for the proposed uses, specifically for the Walgreens use, which was classified, I believe, as warehouse, and came up with trip estimates. We then distributed the traffic to the surrounding road network based on percentage assumptions that were previously documented in a prior traffic study for the Crackersport Roadac Road Warehouse Development, which was based on census data. The intersections we studied were Route 309 and Chapman's Road, Chapman's Road and the Church Road site driveway intersection, and also the Chapman's Road and the, the site truck driveway. The results of the study indicated that all levels of service were dear better, which dear better in PennDOT standards is considered acceptable for urban conditions, such as, is the case for this facility. The queuing is, was shown to be contained within the turnpocket storage, either existing or proposed, which specifically the 95th percentile queue lengths, which is, you know, the 95th percentile of all the queues anticipated. So traffic operations were acceptable.
And is Chapman's Road a state-owned road?
Yes, it is.
And PennDOT requires that property owners obtain a highway occupancy permit in order to access the states right away. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And was a highway occupancy permit obtained for the existing building when it was approved in 2019?
Yes.
And did PennDOT require that we amend our HOP for the property as a result of the new tenant?
They did, which we did amend the, the TIA, which resulted in a few cycles of resubmissions responding to their comments, and ultimately they approved the TIA, I believe it was in March of this year.
And turning to exhibit A11, is this a copy of the HOP, supplemental HOP that PennDOT issued for the Walgreens use?
Yes, it is.
And given the issuance of the supplemental HOP, in your opinion, is it fair to say that PennDOT agrees with your findings in your report, that the proposed tending, tenant will not have a significant impact on the operating conditions at any of the studied intersections?
That, that's correct for two reasons. One is they approved the supplement, which indicates our concurrence, but specifically in the permit language. Did I get my glasses on? They indicate the Walgreens fulfillment center will result in acceptable traffic operations for the studied intersections, and that the site driveway classification of low-volume driveway will remain consistent with the previously approved classification.
And were you present at the three planning commission meetings in which the application was discussed?
Yes.
And the planning commission issued a recommendation of approval for the project, correct?
That's correct.
The planning commission also recommended a condition of approval that we submit a post-occupancy traffic impact study to PennDOT and install any improvements that PennDOT requires. traffic impact study to PennDOT and install any improvements that PennDOT requires, correct?
That's correct. At the planning commission meeting, uh, specifically, we discussed and agreed to verbally at the time to complete a post occupancy study, um, for specifically a left turn warrant analysis for the northbound left turn lane on, at the Route 309 and Chapman's Road intersection. And subsequently, we agreed to install any improvements, uh, that would be required by PennDOT. I, I should clarify, uh, the township did issue a planning commission approval letter dated March 21st, 2023. Um, I think the, the letter, it, it seemed to use more generic language, so I thought it would be important to clarify what was discussed and agreed to at the planning commission meeting. I'll just reiterate it one more time for the record. So there's no, um, no misunderstanding. We agreed to conduct a post occupancy study when school is in session, upon full occupancy for a left turn warrant analysis, uh, which would involve a new traffic count at the intersection, submitting that left turn evaluation study to PennDOT and subsequently, um, installing any improvements, if any, uh, that may be required by PennDOT.
And in the time since the planning commission's recommendation of approval, has township staff suggested an additional recommendation? Excuse me, an additional condition of approval?
They did. Uh, specifically, they had have, uh, suggested that we also, in addition to the intersection of Route 309 and Chapman's Road, they suggested that we also count the site driveways. Um, we had discussed that somewhat at the planning commission meeting, had not agreed to it. However, uh, we have no issue in complying with that, that recommendation. We will count them at the same time as the Route 309 Chapman's Road intersection, uh, would be counted.
I have no further questions for Mr. Pasterski.
Are there any board questions? I just have one for our solicitor. The language regarding the traffic count being the driveway, the addition that township staff had submitted in agreement with.
Yes. And, and the part of what Mr. Adams had read into the record before were the five conditions, uh, that are being provided. And that was one of the conditions that was spelled out.
Is there any public comment at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I have no further witnesses. I would just ask that my exhibits be admitted into the record.
So moved. I will just want to clarify for the record, if I may, Attorney Rowley. As we discussed just a short time ago, there were the five conditions that, uh, Mr. Adams had read into the record. You've had an opportunity to review them with your client. Is your client in agreement with attaching all of those conditions?
Uh, yes, we were in agreement with those conditions. You know, just quickly, there was a long conversation at the planning commission regarding, you know, the scope of the post occupancy study. The way it's, the way it's worded, it says request, uh, you know, pursue all upgrades requested by PennDOT. In my experience, PennDOT doesn't really request anything. They either require it or they don't. So essentially, we will submit the post occupancy study with what's been outlined here and will comply with whatever PennDOT requests improvement wise.
Understood.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I just had one question. Um, it was mentioned that postcards were sent to neighboring residents. Have we had any response from any of the neighboring property owners?
No.
Nothing. Thank you. Are there any other board questions? I did have one more about lighting in the parking lot specifically where the, um, employees will be moving from the parking area to the building. Has any consideration been given to give, to put specific lighting there for the safety of those passing since that is also a truck route?
I'll, I'll bring back, uh, Mr. Horvath. He may be best suited to answer that.
The only lighting that I can really attest to would be that which was shown on the land development plans, which was general site lighting. There is lighting in the vicinity of the doorway, but nothing specifically intended to, you know, particularly illuminate that corner of the building because that was not initially contemplated as a main entrance at the time. So whether or not additional site lighting would be required by building code or desired by the occupant is maybe a question if Eric is still on the line. That you can get from him, otherwise I did not have any further information.
Eric, are you still there?
I, I am still online. Thank you. I, I do not believe our current plans, uh, submitted for permit review included any changes to exterior lighting specifically for the parking zone that's being referenced or the walkway from the parking zone to the building entry. I do believe we are currently planned to increase the illumination level in general around the truck court area. The, um, developer's base building spec level of lighting, while code compliant was a bit short of what Walgreens standards are for that function. So I do believe we're increasing the light level in general at our truck court, uh, for the purpose of our own operating standards. But it wasn't specific to, I would call it pedestrian lighting, uh, of the walkway. So I'm not sure if that addresses the question.
Does it go, does the lighting also incorporate the, the new parking area that's proposed for the employees to park? Or is it strictly on the building itself?
No, it, it's building mounted above the dock doors.
And just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is there any lighting proposed for that parking area specifically?
I believe our developers team could confirm that whether or not they have light poles out there. I thought there might have been lighting in that zone in the original base project prior to Walgreens work beginning.
That's correct. And the remote parking area is illuminated. Uh, and I was just informed by the, um, the representative of the applicant that there are lights at each entrance to the building, building mounted lights.
Thank you.
And just one final note, that a portion of that walkway was part of that prior approval. It's been extended a little bit, but that was also, you know, reviewed during the land development process as well, at least a portion of it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Are there any public questions? Anyone online, Dave, that might have a question? Okay.
At this time then, we will close the hearing and the board will, uh, go into deliberations.
Okay. At this time, I'll, I'll open it for any public, I'm sorry, any board comment before we go on to public comment and proceed with the vote.
I just have a comment to the, uh, the applicants. I think they did an excellent job presenting it as a new board member. I mean, I've been commissioner a year and a half and, uh, somewhat familiar with the project prior to being a commissioner. Uh, but I, you guys made it very clear and, uh, I think your presentation was well done. So thank you for that. And educating me on what I have to vote on.
Any other board comment?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kennedy actually, uh, took my comment that I had in my head. I want to thank the team, you know, for your presentation this evening, including you, Eric, um, as well online there. Not, um, prejudging the outcome, but, um, I would welcome to see you continue for a long time in South Whitehall with a very responsible business, um, in, in, in a good location for this type of business. So, but mostly thank you for your presentation, the thoroughness and, and your willingness to entertain all questions.
And I'll echo that. I know it was a little bit lengthy to review the project narrative, but, um, being that this board was not in place when the original conditional use hearing was conducted and the vote was taken. Uh, I think it was very helpful for all of us to hear, um, each of those items that you went through. So thank you for bearing with us.
I do have a comment as well. Um, I echo what they say. Thank you very much. It was really informative, very thoroughly done. Thank you. And I really do appreciate the fact that you will, I think I read, read with, uh, in six months or so, when you have full occupancy, that you're, you're going to revisit and look at traffic and base a study on that. So, um, and if there's any problems, take care of it. So I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'll echo the, uh, comments of the other commissioners. I've sat through a number of conditional use hearings as a, a member of the public in the audience, uh, this one being my first as a commissioner. And I, I can't say I've ever seen a, a more thorough, uh, presentation. So I want to thank you for walking through each of the conditions with us. It's incredibly helpful and transparent and, uh, best of luck. Thank you.
If there's no other board comment at this time, is there any public comment before we call for a vote? Anything online, Dave? Okay. At this time, is there a motion regarding the conditional use, 2022 conditional use review, 2022 dash 601 for the 4741 Chapman's Road Flex Warehouse Facility?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Sorry about that. For purposes of, um, clarifying the motion, would this be a motion to grant conditional use approval of the application of 4741 Chapman's Road subject to the following conditions. One, compliance by the applicant with all the provisions, uh, that they provided as part of their exhibits and their testimony, uh, at tonight's hearing. And also, um, setting forth the compliance with all the conditions that were outlined, uh, by Mr. Greg Adams, uh, earlier today, uh, as part of the staff and planning commission recommendation.
Yes, that's correct. That's my motion.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Hodges, were you going to second that? Please second it again.
I will second it.
Great. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So moving on, on our agenda to ordinances. Agenda item eight, A, direction discussion followed by motion requesting permission to send to solicitor for legal review and ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, excuse me, County of Lehigh and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part One administrative legislation of the codified ordinances of South Whitehall Township to provide for a new chapter to establish a capital reserve fund and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. Um, this ordinance was prepared, um, in order to accomplish the following. Established parameters required for the use of the capital reserve fund in accordance with the first class township code, specifically section 1502.3, and to memorialize the use of, um, general fund money and monies that are carried over, um, from year to year, to list those funds within the capital reserve fund as, as separate light items. Um, so typically, um, the township uses the money that, that is carried over from the conclusion of the fiscal year into the next fiscal year to, um, to fund capital projects, but this now formalizes the process. Additionally, the intent of the ordinance would, would be to build up the fund balance of the capital reserve fund instead of using the, the carryover general fund revenue. So essentially, um, the general fund would fund the capital reserve fund, uh, in a clear transfer each year, not simply use carryover revenue. So this would be in accordance with, uh, first class township requirements. Um, addition, in addition, uh, sub-funds of the capital reserve fund would be created for the capital sewer fund, capital water fund, and capital refuse fund, so that these funds are no, not commingled with other funds. Um, however, they, they will all be factored into the overall fund balance of this capital reserve fund. In lieu of including capital request forms in the budget for 2024, the narrative of the budget itself would set forth the need and justification for capital expenditures. This will have the effect of ensuring, in ensuring enhanced transparency concerning the funding of proposed capital projects. Also, um, is the intent of the township administration to separate operating, operating expenses from capital expenses more clearly to provide an accurate and enhanced budgeting process. Um, so with that, I, at this time, I'm seeking a motion to send this ordinance, um, to the solicitor, noting that, um, the Budget and Finance Committee did review it during its Wednesday, April 5th, 2023 meeting, and asked that it go before the board as well as the solicitor.
Thank you, Tom. I do appreciate the work of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Thank you for bringing this to the administration and now to the board. Tom, I thank you for drafting and providing more transparency with our budget and also to have our, our capital fund separate, including our sewer and water and refuse. Appreciate you doing that. Are there any board comments on this agenda item? Any public comment? Hey, hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve sending this to legal for review?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Resolutions. Nine A, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Dorney Park Project 2024, and I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to make a statement for our roller coaster fans who may be in attendance. South Whitehall Township has not received specific information related to the proposed attraction for review during the land development process and is therefore unable to answer questions regarding that attraction. That being said, this is an application to further develop property located at 3830 Dorney Park Road. The plan proposes to construct a new 161.67 foot attraction on the site of the Stinger Roller Coaster just north of the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Dorney Park Road on a 2.7 acre portion of the 196 acre parcel. The property is served by Public Water and Sewer and is zoned Commercial Recreation, CR. Dorney Park LLC is the owner and applicant. At their February 16th, 2023 meeting, the planning commission reviewed and recommended preliminary final plan approval to Major Plan 2023 101, Dorney Park Project 2024, with 15 conditions and nine favorably recommended waiver slash deferral requests. In the interim, the applicant has addressed eight conditions and the staff has added three conditions typical of approving resolutions. The planning commission and staff discussed historic deferrals of sidewalk and other right-of-way improvements with the applicant. It was agreed that the applicant shall endeavor to start the right-of-way improvements along the fringe of Dorney Park's property through the process outlined and agreed upon in condition number six, noting that the agency approvals there, that are outside the applicant's and township's control. So the applicant is here tonight to request preliminary final plan approval and staff has no objections to that request.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Booba Fitzpatrick, Linton Booba Counsel for Cedar Fair, Dorney Park.
I'm Jessica Naderman. I'm the Vice President and General Manager. Good evening. Welcome.
I'll, I'll, I'll put the pressure on Jessica because the reason Mr. Adams had to make that statement is that the planning commission, it looked like there are about 50 objectors remotely, but all they wanted to know about was the coaster. So, um, if that's the case, Mr. Adams probably has, uh, at least sued the savage beast for now. But I will have, um, Jessica explain what she can about the, the coaster. Okay?
Absolutely. Um, it is a steel roller coaster that we will be building. It is on a plot of land that a prior coaster once existed, so it is a replacement of sorts. We do not anticipate, um, you know, growing attendance above pre-pandemic levels. We're, we're just trying to get back to a regular attendance level at the park. And other than that, we want to be good partners. Um, obviously the sidewalk is something that we would want to partner with and make sure that we do our best to, 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 to get through as well as, um, you know, noise mitigation, uh, efforts have already been put in place and is, is part of the package with this ride. So that's it.
Yeah. So the coaster does say, uh, it will be approximately 167 feet tall in the same area where Stinger had been located, which is generally the, 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 the center of the park. It's not on a perimeter. It's not impacting the residential neighborhoods. In fact, it's probably at the lowest elevation, probably at the lowest. It is, Mr. Adam. Our engineer just confirmed that it's at the, the, the. just confirmed that it's at the lowest elevation. And the reason we can't disclose much more is because of the competitive advantage that that would give to competitors if they knew exactly what we were doing a year and a half before the ride were put in place. I will note that at the February Planning Commission meeting, the vote was unanimous. There were no objectors, as far as I know, and I know most of the objectors, at least the typical objectors. There are no objectors this evening. We have a very clean engineering letter. Mr. Pittcock's office, Pittcock's office has favorably reviewed the waivers, and we also had a discussion about the sidewalks. We think we're going above and beyond what anybody would need to do. This coaster itself is certainly not creating a need for pedestrian traffic, and unlike most developments, this is a 200-acre parcel. And just think about that. If you put a merry-go-round up in the middle of 200 acres, you usually don't need sidewalks surrounding the park or even in some areas. But to the extent the township wants that sidewalk, we're not exactly certain how safe it will be. We've indicated our cooperation, and that was worked out through the solicitor and the Planning Commission, what we're willing to do. In fact, we've already begun the process. Adam, we've begun the survey. Is that correct?
Could sir, I'm sorry, could I ask you to come up to the microphone for the benefit of the people who are attending virtually?
Happy to. Adam Smith from Barry Eyes and Associates. We've completed the topographic survey of the area, and I also had a discussion with David today about the project. So we're going to set up a meeting with PennDOT and with township staff to move it forward.
Very good. Thank you.
So we, any of us can answer questions, but we really don't have much more in terms of a presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll open up to the board if there's any questions on this particular project. Mr. Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Maybe to add a little bit to the intrigue, I don't mean to do that, but I will ask this question, and if you're able to answer. Do you envision this new roller coaster being totally new construction, or would this be a movement from another Cedar Fair location?
It is brand new.
You just removed some of the mystique. Thank you. I would also like to say personally, Dorney Park has been a great partner in South Whitehall. So I really appreciate even the upgrade or fulfillment of what you've lost in the last couple of years and your continued investment in South Whitehall. Thank you.
I just have one additional question. You mentioned the approximately 161 feet. Just out of curiosity, what was the height of the previous coaster, the Stinger that was there?
Don't quote me on it, but it's probably in between 135 and 150. It's ish in there.
And just to echo Commissioner Osborne's comment, thank you for being a great partner. Thank you for working with us. Dorney Park is also a vital part of our local economy. So thank you for what you do and looking forward to this. Thank you.
You should be able to monitor that by the amusement tax in the coming years.
That's exactly what I was referring to.
And I'd just like to ask our township engineer if there's any additional comment that you might have for the board.
No, the the letter, the engineering of this plan is very clean. We look forward to meeting and discussing sidewalk. That's coming, and we'll report back on that as it progresses. But for this specific application, very clean engineering letter.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Talarito, I don't want to put words to you, Matthew. Do you agree with the request for waivers and referrals?
We have no objection. That's correct. Yes.
Do you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to thank you for being such a good neighbor. I really appreciate it. This is very exciting, and I wish you all the best.
Very much. It's going to be a good ride. Sounds very exciting. If there's no other questions from the board at this time, any public comment or question? Anything online, Dave? Do we need to go through each of the waivers individually, or are we allowed to?
Personally, we would recommend each waiver that is requested. I think there's two from staff that talk about building permits prior to recording. We have no objection to that. That's usually staff, but that's.
Yeah, that's something that Dorney Park typically requests, and we have no objection to that.
Objection. If the board has no objection, we can make one motion, which would include all of the waivers unless anyone would like to pull out any particular waiver for discussion. They're pretty general waivers. Okay, at this time, is there a motion to proceed with said resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Dorney Park Project 2024?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck. We look forward to seeing the new coaster.
Appreciate your time. Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item 9B, we have a resolution granting a waiver of subdivision and land development review and approval requirements of the South Whitehall Township Subdivision and Land Development Regulations for South Whitehall Township relating to property located at Lehigh County PIN 5477690-26737. That is known as Covered Bridge Park for the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail Construction Segments 41 through 45. I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to present.
Thank you. So the reason for this waiver is due to the fact that the township is nearly finished with the completion of the construction plans for the grant-funded Jordan Creek Greenway from Laprow to Weir Mill Road and Covered Bridge Park project. So the section of the trail includes ADA crossings and will connect with the existing section of the trail to the west of Weir Mill Road. As previously reported, the township has received $1 million in PennDOT transportation alternative set aside funding to construct this segment. We anticipate the project going out to bid in October 2023, with construction starting in early '24. Technically, due to the fact that our subdivision and land development ordinance recognizes any impervious coverage as triggering land development approval requirements, this project would be subject to those requirements. We're requesting a waiver of the SALDO application process to help facilitate the expedient completion of this project. So if we were to add the detail of the SALDO requirements, they wouldn't necessarily add any anything to the final deliverable of the trail project. So it would simply add more cost to the township and delay the process. But it's important to note that this this trail obviously does not include any buildings or structures or feature any water and sewer utility connections. It's simply the addition of the impervious coverage that is triggering the SALDO approval requirements. So under this process, we would still be required to obtain any outside agency reviews, approvals, and permits, including not limited to stormwater mitigation, erosion and sediment control, and PennDOT requirements. So with the TASSA grant, we are already undertaking a rigorous approval process that must comply with state and federal requirements. For example, we've already obtained a waterway encroachment permit from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. So basically, we feel as though with the standards that are set forth for the TASSA grant that we've, you know, we're already from an engineering perspective, providing the detail at this point, SALDO process would just be an administrative process that would just delay the project. So that's why we're seeking the waiver. And that was reviewed with the township engineer, and I believe he concurs with that assessment as well.
That's correct. There's a handful of capital projects that township undertakes that goes through this process that is either designed by our office or by a township consultant. Most recently, the campus expansion went through the same process when we did the improvements to this site. All the outside agency approvals that were required were obtained, but a representative from the township didn't then go through and do a land development review on the plans themselves, as it was our office that designed. Pretty standard. And then, to Tom's point, the plans themselves are construction plans. It's a different set of plans and a different set of requirements and a land development set. So the review would be asking or requiring information that not necessarily changes the project or anything that would be designed, but only just changes the plan set and adds time to the project.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you both, Tom and Tony. I'll open it up to the board. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item 9C, we have a resolution granting conditional preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Parkland School District New Operations Center. I'll ask Greg Adams, our planner, to please present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the property located at 2619 Stadium Drive. The plan proposes to raise the existing structure and construct a two-story 39,295-square-foot building, 90 parking spaces, and associate stormwater management facilities on the 8.7-acre parcel. The property is served by public water and is zoned Rural Residential RR2. Parkland School District is the owner and applicant. At the last meeting, your last meeting, the Board of Commissioners tabled the resolution to approve the project in order for staff and school district to work out the language of Condition Number Six, and in order for the BOC to draw the location of the possible sidewalk along Lower Stadium Drive and Lime Kiln Road, and receive staff recommendations on the school district's request to defer the sidewalk. At their February 26, 2023 meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended conditional preliminary final plan approval to this plan with 19 conditions, seven positively recommended waiver-deferral requests, and two negatively recommended deferral requests. In the interim, the applicant has addressed three conditions, and staff has added three conditions standard to approving resolutions. The applicant requests conditional preliminary final plan approval tonight, plus I do believe they want to discuss a deferral request. Staff has no issues with the applicant's prior requests. The deferral request, however, is up for your decision. So I believe they are present tonight to make their presentation.
Thank you, Greg. Welcome.
Good evening. Scott McMacken with Cowan Associates. Again, we were here two weeks ago, presented the application. So unless you'd like me to, we'll just move along. You know, there was some discussion on one of the conditions in the approval resolution, number six, and I believe that we worked with staff to get that resolved. So I don't believe that's an issue anymore. The only other item that we discussed was the deferral of some of the sidewalk and frontage improvements along Stadium Road and Lime Kiln. And that's really the only item that we would really like any resolution on this evening. There was one other comment about some of the parking, and we are going to revise the northern parking area to have some curb cuts. So in those overflow conditions during football games, that that upper area, the grass area, that's going to remain north of that parking area can still be utilized. So we will make that change as well. But I believe those were only the only items that were still needed to be, I consider, from two weeks ago to tonight.
Very good. Thank you.
So I understand some of the some of the board may have gone out to the site, taken a look, and if you would like to have any further discussion on that, we're more than welcome to. Other than that, I think Greg mentioned we would be seeking an approval tonight so we can move forward with the project.
Thank you very much. Yes, the board did go out for a site visit with staff, with our township manager and our Director of Operations and our Director of Community Development. Open it up to the board if you've got any comments or questions.
Yeah, my two comments. First, thanks for addressing the curb cuts, especially along the northern end there at Stadium Drive. Helpful improvement. So thank you on that. With respect to the sidewalk deferrals, obviously, it's open for board discussion, but I know my personal belief is that we defer the frontage improvements along Lime Kiln as to deter walking along Lime Kiln towards the turnpike, the underpass there at the turnpike. But it's my opinion that we require the frontage improvements all along Stadium Drive, all the way down to the intersection of Lime Kiln and Stadium Drive. After visiting the site, you know, thinking about it and just drawing on personal experience from having been there for football games and other events, that would be my recommendation. But of course, it's up to the majority of the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Roth. I certainly had a very similar conclusion that I came to after visiting the site and considering the improvements that are being made with these buildings now. Appreciate what you're doing there. I think that it would certainly complement the project and help connectivity for any employees who may want to even just take a walk. We saw some people walking while we happened to be out there for a site visit. So I certainly am in favor of the deferral for Lime Kiln, but Stadium Drive, I think it would greatly benefit this entire project to have that there.
Thank you.
Any other board comment?
Actually, I tend to agree. And just having three kids that went through Parkland, I always thought that that was an unsafe condition, watching how the traffic and the kids poured out of the stadium after a game. I think it would be a much safer option to have that sidewalk on Stadium Road. And, you know, just, I could still see them. They would spill out from the stadium, go down Stadium Road, over the grass, walk over to BK. So I think Stadium Road is a necessity. I do agree with not continuing it towards the underpass on Lime Kiln, though. And as Commissioner Kelly said, we did see some employees coming out when we did our site visit, and they sat on, they just sat on the property. There was almost like nowhere to go. It would have been nice for them to have a space to walk or even a bench somewhere for your consideration. I can't tell you what to do, but it would be nice for the employees, I think. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Any other board comment?
I just concur with the rest of our board. I was also in the site visit. We all were.
Right.
Any other comment? Any from the public? Do we have a, do I need to go through each waiver? We're going to do a deferral for Lime Kiln. I believe that's the consensus of the board, and then to require them on Stadium.
Yes, we will amend the resolution to reflect that. Can you sign the acceptance of conditions based on this?
Yep.
Okay, we have that.
Very good. We have everything we need. Okay, so do I have a motion to proceed with approval of the resolution granting conditional preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Parkland School District New Operations Center with the deferral of sidewalk on Lime Kiln Road, but the inclusion of sidewalk on Stadium Drive?
I'll make that motion for the resolution as amended.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you so much for your time and interest.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item 9D, we have a resolution granting a waiver of subdivision and land development review and approval requirements of the South Whitehall Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance for plan entitled 3420 Walbert Avenue Additional Parking. I will ask our planner, Greg Adams, to please present.
Thank you. This is an application to further develop the property located at 3420 Walbert Avenue. The application proposes to construct five additional parking spaces totaling 832.5 square feet on the 1.11-acre property. The property is zoned General Commercial 1, GC1 Special Height Limitation, and is served by Public Water and Sanitary Sewer. The owner and applicant is Stone Tavern LLC. And this is a waiver from the land development process, almost exactly the same as with the trail situation. While the proposed work may be considered de minimis, it does meet the definition of land development in SALDO and therefore qualifies for land development review. The applicant is here tonight to request a waiver from Articles Five and Six of SALDO, which is basically the required improvements agreements and inspections for all subdivisions, and Article Six, Location Standards of Improvements for all subdivisions, as well as Article Three, which is the application standards for all subdivisions. And at this point, staff has no objections to this request. The applicant team is here to take any questions.
Very good. Good evening. The board have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a quick question. I actually went to the site to take a look at this. It's always easier for me to visualize it when I'm there rather than looking at a map or a graphic. The parking spaces will not eliminate that grassy area next to the building. Is that true, or will it encroach on that grassy area?
Yes, it will encroach in that grassy area.
Will there be any grassy area?
Yes.
There will be about, would it be half? You're taking half of it, or a third, or just an estimate?
That's probably about between a quarter and a half, somewhere, and maybe a third, somewhere like that.
All right, thank you.
I just have one question. I drive past this property frequently, and I notice that oftentimes the parking lot is kind of overcrowded, and either employees or patients have to kind of have makeshift parking on the property adjacent. Is this designed to rectify that problem? Is that the intent?
Yes. Yeah, different tenants have come in who have different peak times, so the traffic is a little different, and the parking needs are a little different.
I just noticed that there's makeshift overflow parking, so that's why I was wondering if this is the problem that's attempting to solve.
There's also some maintenance items that we're probably going to do. This is the only, the new development that we're doing. There's just, you know, some pavement we might replace as needed or the, you know, other things, but we would supply a building or a zoning permit prior to doing that.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any from the public? Nothing online. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 9E, we have a resolution establishing the manner of compensation for zoning hearing board solicitor for the Township of South Whitehall, and ask our Township Manager to present.
Thank you. On March 22, 2023, the zoning hearing board appointed Thomas Dinkelacher as the zoning hearing board solicitor. Mr. Dinkelacher is appointed by the zoning hearing board. However, the Board of Commissioners sets his fees, so this resolution would complete that process. Mr. Dinkelacher has not asked for a change in his fees from 2022 to 2023, so and the fee schedule is incorporated within the resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any board discussion on this agenda item? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have a resolution establishing the manner of compensation for the alternate zoning hearing board solicitor for the Township of South Whitehall. I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you. Mr. Rocco Beltrami is the alternate zoning hearing board solicitor, similar to Mr. Dinkelacher. He works with Norris McLaughlin, same firm. He will serve during times when Attorney Dinkelacher is not available, so same fee schedule as the primary solicitor in this case. Would seek a motion to approve the resolution.
Very good. Thank you. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And Item 9G, a resolution establishing the manner of compensation for conflict solicitor to the zoning hearing board for the Township of South Whitehall. Tom?
Thank you. On March 22, 2023, the zoning hearing board appointed Attorney John Ashcraft as the conflict solicitor, so he would serve during times when the Norris McLaughlin attorneys of Dinkelacher and Ash, sorry, of, and Beltrami would not be able to hear an appeal. So Mr. Ashcroft has also indicated he is not raising his fees from 2022, so the fee schedule is incorporated in the resolution.
Excellent. Very good. Any board comment? Anything from the public? I have a motion to proceed with said resolution.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 9H, we have a resolution extending conditional offers of employment for the entry-level position of patrol officer in the Township's Police Department to candidates number 84818 and 05530, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty. I'll call on our Police Chief Glenn Dorni to present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This is just the process. As you know, we're in the hiring process for four vacant positions on the Police Department, and the next two candidates we would like to start the background investigations on would be candidate number 84818 and 05530, so I'm officially requesting a conditional offer be extended via resolution so we can start the background process for those individuals.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Dorni. Is there any board discussion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve with said resolution?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item 9I, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, designating the officials authorized to execute documents and agreements and assigning the project contacts for local share account statewide program grant projects entitled Tiger Mower Replacement and Water Correlator. I'll call on our Township Manager to present.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to announce that the Township has received two local share statewide grants that were awarded by the Commonwealth Financing Authority on March 16, 2023. They are as follows. For the statewide program, Tiger Mower Replacement, $151,815.98. Also, the Water Correlator, $25,500. I want to thank Public Works and Herb Bender for having the foresight to submit applications that were deemed to be worthy of award, so these will be very much needed enhancements, especially seeing the mower that this is replacing. I think it was necessary and timely. So in the time period since the grants were originally applied for in 2022, the Township has experienced personnel changes, as such it is necessary to restate and confirm the officials that are authorized to execute the documents and agreements, as well as serve as project contacts. So myself and the President of the Board of Commissioners are the two officials authorized to sign the grant agreements, and then Director of Operations Herb Bender and Long Range Planner Chris Stroller will be assigned as project contacts. Any questions?
No question. I just want to echo your thanks to Herb Bender and Public Works and all those involved in seeking these grants. It's always good news when we are able to obtain a grant and offset costs of our capital expenses, so thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this resolution?
Ditto.
Thank you. Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We're going to jump down to Agenda Item 10B. We have a motion requesting permission to reject bid on March 24, 2023, for road building materials, followed by permission to purchase materials from the PADGS contracts for H and K materials, and I'll ask our Director of Operations Herb Bender to present.
Thank you. One bid was received and opened on Thursday, March 24 of 2023. The road building materials bid was advertised twice in local publication as required by law. Twenty-four potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the PennBid website. The project was previously requested and approved to be advertised by the Board of Commissioners at the March 1, 2023 meeting as part of the yearly roadway resurfacing schedule for various roads within the township in addition to the yearly needs for patching and road repairs. Due to only receiving one bid, Township staff is requesting that we reject the bids that were received.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this? Commissioner Hasbrouck?
Yes, I have a question. Herb, you said reject the bids?
The bid, yes.
The bid, okay. I just, yeah, just want to make sure I understood. This may sound like an odd question, but let me ask. Is there a formal procedure in opening a bid? And let me give you an example why I ask. You know, in Lehigh County, when bids are received, the Controller's Office is there during the opening of the bids, and that is for, just to make sure that everything's done official. Do we have any process like that here?
Yes. Donna Zacharou, who is in charge of all the bids, and myself were in the room present when we opened the bid.
Okay. Is that formally documented, a process like that?
Yes, we have to have two people to open the bid.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion to reject the bid?
Make a motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving back up to then Resolution 9J, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the purchase of asphalt products through the CoStar's Cooperative Purchasing Program. And if Herb, you'd present on that as well?
Sure. The reason we wanted to reject the bids and go with CoStar's pricing for the material that's going to be used for the paving project of almost 95,000 square yards is due to our bid price came back at $74.15 a ton. When we reached out to get CoStar's pricing, to check pricing against this bid, H and K came back with Cooper'sburg material at $66 a ton, so it is a significant savings to purchase off of the CoStar's pricing, and which is a little weird. I also got the CoStar's pricing from New Enterprise, and the bid price was higher than their CoStar's price for some reason. So we are going to move forward with H and K, and we also can utilize New Enterprise's CoStar pricing. Also, if we're only going to do a little road patch or pothole patching, we can still utilize them, which compared to the $66 a ton, New Enterprise was around $70 a ton, so it's not much of a difference if we only need a little bit, so. But the difference for the paving project is almost $68,000.
That's fantastic, Herb. Thank you for your diligence, continually always seeking the most cost-efficient options for the Township. It's wonderful. Thank you for that.
And I would like to thank Donna also for helping put all this together and getting us through the process to do it the correct way.
Absolutely. Please pass along our appreciation as well to Donna.
We'll definitely do that.
Any board comment on this motion? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Moving on to Agenda Item 10A, we have a motion to proceed with scheduling of special meeting to conduct applicant interviews for the Planning Commission vacancy. Realized when we went through the packet, we only received one applicant for this particular position, and I want to open this up to discussion with the board, something that I was thinking about. If, I know that we put it on our website, but maybe I would check with Tom and see if there's a way that we might re-advertise this a little bit more broadly through social media or other means we might have to give us other options. There's nothing, it's not anything about this particular candidate, but when we're interviewing, I think it's always wise to have options. I don't know how the rest of it will.
I have a question. The vacancy on the Planning Commission isn't expected until June, correct?
Correct.
Would we have time to advertise this in our newsletter before then?
No. I mean, we could use Nixle, we could use Facebook with our Parks and Rec and Police pages. We'll do what we can to get the message out. You do have time before the post becomes vacant.
All right, we've got a couple months.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly? Just thinking through this a little bit. My concern is that we had a process that was advertised, and perhaps, and I don't have an objection to what you're suggesting, but I'm wondering if we should maybe formalize this a little bit more. Here's my concern. We all know Todd, and Todd has actually interviewed for this position and others previously. My concern generally is that it may be perceived by an applicant that because they were the only one, is this process fair? What if the assumption in that person's mind is, or the Township is going to use a different process than the one that was advertised because they don't like me? They don't want me. It's just, you know, a concern that I have.
I appreciate your sharing that. I thought the same thing. I wrestled with this for several days because the applicant has interviewed with us before.
Yeah.
He currently is appointed to another position on an advisory board that we had selected him for, so there are a lot of
Different factors.
Factors that I, I mean, I can go either way. It was just an option that I wanted to bring to the board. It is no reflection whatsoever on the applicant.
No, and I actually realized that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's April, and we don't need to fill this till June. We can certainly, my thinking was, and maybe I should have explained it a little more lengthy in this front end, if we schedule this interview a couple weeks from now because of advertising, and the board wanted to look at other options, that is going to push us out further. I was just thinking from a time perspective, it might give us more expedient path forward, but I'm open to do either.
So Commissioner Osborne raises a good point, is that we established a process. Would the board be amenable, and I know we've done this before with other applications, but I believe we owe it to the applicant to at least conduct an interview based on the process that we outlined. The process that was set forth and advertised was you have until, I believe it was April 14, to submit an application, and assuming, you know, we received any applications, that we would conduct an interview. So Commissioner Osborne raises a good point. I think we owe the applicant an interview, and at that point, the board can make a decision whether or not we like to appoint that individual to the Planning Commission. I think following that process, we owe it to the applicant to give him an interview and allow him to make the cases why he believes we should appoint him to the Planning Commission. It's only fair.
Good points raised. I agree with both of you. Thank you for your comments.
So just winging in, it was advertised. People had adequate time to put in their resume or whatever they wanted to respond with. This particular candidate does show an interest, and he's persevered, and that shows to me that it's someone who really wants this, is willing to learn, and I don't know, that means something to me. On the other hand, I see exactly what you're saying, you know, that you don't have a comparison, you don't have more than one. Could anyone look at it and say, oh, well, that's an unfair process because, you know, you just have the one person? So this is a tough one. It's a really tough one.
And I would say, I mean, this is a short-term discussion, but, you know, this is the second time we've been in this situation now. In the last three months, we had three alternate vacancies on the zoning hearing board. We accepted applications, we received one. So not that this is something our board necessarily needs to take an action on, but we need to find a better way of, there must be a reason why individuals aren't applying, and that's maybe either they don't want to, or they're not getting, you know, the message that these positions are available. So, you know, we can discuss a short-term solution for the Planning Commission vacancy, but, you know, this might be a sign of things to come that we're going to, you know, receive less applications than spots we have available, so something to consider, and maybe we can discuss that in the future.
I think that's a good idea, and I certainly would ask our Township Manager maybe to give that some thought and maybe find some avenues where we might be able to advertise more broadly. Maybe it is in the newsletter twice a year when it goes out, just to have, that reaches much more, many more residents than might visit the website to see.
And I think going off of what Commissioner Hodges said and what I said before, we owe this applicant an interview. The board, you know, makes a decision after that on who to appoint, but we owe the applicant an interview. That's the fair option, in my opinion.
I'll agree with, I'll agree with.
And then, and then our
If in the future, if in the future, the board elects not to interview only one candidate, but not on this one, if that's the desire of the board, but this one should be interviewed, and if in the future we only get one applicant, let it be understood that when we get multiple, then we'll do the interview, but not this time.
Oh, that makes sense.
It would be nice, too, if we had a It would be nice, too, if we had a pool of applicants. Like, I know we have more than one vacancy on our different boards. And is it possible to just announce a general announcement? We have different vacancies. If you have any interest now, please submit your resume. And if not, we'll keep them on hand or maybe even accept rolling applications.
Well, not to mention, we, I believe we keep applications in perpetuity. And I know in the past, there have been multiple applicant, you know, for a single Planning Commission spot, there's been four or five applicants. So if we can maybe draw on that list and...
We pretty much exhausted that that existing list.
Okay.
There is, we could, there is a civil service applicant for the, one of the alternate positions. You could also interview that person during this interview as well.
Oh, very good.
So you could do two.
Excellent. That's perfect.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to proceed with scheduling?
So moved.
I was second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Tom, if you would circulate an email to the board and we can agree on a...
Yes, will do.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10C, a motion requesting permission to proceed with purchase of a used forklift. On her bender?
Yes, good evening. The current forklift that Public Works is using is a 1990 Clark forklift with 5,000 hours on it. The master brake cylinder has gone bad. The rear axle falls out sometimes. Public Works has solicited solicited three quotes for a used forklift. The forklift we would like to purchase is from Best Line Equipment for $19,875. It does have 2,000 hours on the used machine. We did have our lead mechanic check it out, and he said it is in great shape. It does come with a one year warranty also with the used forklift. We are requesting that the Board of Commissioners to move forward with the purchase of the used forklift from Best Line Equipment for $19,875. Just so everyone knows, this was budgeted in the Sewer Capital Major Machinery and Equipment Fund for $10,000, and also in the Water Capital Machinery Equipment Fund for $10,000. So we are a couple bucks under budget.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Any board comment?
Just a question, Herb. What would a new one cost?
Anywhere from 45 to 50.
Herb, this one's a 2020. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. I would, I could check it right here. Yes, it is. It's a 2020 Dusan.
Does it have the same capabilities as the old one?
Yes, we made, this one can actually lift a little more for us.
Okay.
We were at that capacity where sometimes we couldn't lift everything we needed to. And this one will also be able to reach up to the storage area where all the big truck tires are kept for storage until we need them also.
We certainly got our money's worth out of the old one.
Yes.
Herb, is this particular piece of equipment right here on 309?
Yes, it is. Yep. That's how we were able to have our mechanic check it out.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other board discussion? Anything from the public? Herb, if you'd come up to the microphone again, please. Turn the microphone on, please.
Okay, there it is. Okay. Dave Dory, 1352 Deerfield Drive. I'm on the occupational advice committee for logistics warehouse technology at LCTI. And they're struggling with buying a new forklift. One of the problems, the new forklifts is buying one. You're up against the Amazons and the DSCs and all that, and want to buy 50 at a time. So people don't fool with people that want to buy one, just for the point.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So jump on it. Now that Amazon knows.
There's no other comment? We have a motion to proceed with said motion.
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Agenda item 2, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with purchase of multiband mobile radios. I'll call in Chief Dorney to present.
Thank you. The police department is in the process of fleet upgrades. We'll need the necessary equipment to outfit the vehicles appropriately. Requests for the quotes were sent to multiple vendors, and we received two responses. First, from Industrial Communications, they provided a quote of $28,840.24 for four Harris XL 200M multiband mobile radios. Tactical Public Safety has provided a quote of $29,741.72 for the same radios. Both vendors are Co-Stars vendors. We are requesting permission to move forward with the purchase of those four radios from Industrial Communications.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Did these bids come in as expected budget wise? Are we...
Actually, they flip-flopped last time. Tactical Public Safety was a little bit cheaper. This time, Industrial was a little bit cheaper. So they they really lowered their prices a little bit for us.
And it's within the budget line item?
Yeah. Yes, within budget as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any board comment? Anything from the public? None of a motion to proceed with said motion?
Make a motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Correspondence and Information. Tom, if you would review our upcoming meetings?
The upcoming meetings are as follows, with all details posted on the township website. Thursday, April 20th, 7:30 PM, Planning Commission. One interest concerning that meeting, Ridge Farms Phase 1B, they have tabled. They're no longer listed on the agenda, just for anyone that is following that project. Monday, April 24th, 10 AM, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Wednesday, April 26th, 9 AM, Pension Committee. Wednesday, April 26th, 7 PM, Zoning Hearing Board. Monday, May 1st, 7 PM, Public Safety Commission. All of the meetings will be held here at the Township Building.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Direction and Discussion. Item A, Vista's Park Review of Conceptual Plan. Tom, if you'd review?
Yes. Sorry. Okay. So no official action is requested from the Board of Commissioners this evening. As you will recall, the township did receive grant funding from DCNR for Vista's Park as well as from for from DCED. So the Vista's Park DCNR grant was $200,000 with a with a match requirement of $200,000. And then the DCNR, I'm sorry, the DCED grant was $85,966. So the scope of the work for the project was construction of a pickleball court, pedestrian walkways, nature play areas, fencing shade structures, ADA access projects on and related site improvements. As noted previously, there were a number of challenges relative to the existing topography and landscape features of the park. We have been working with the township engineer to accomplish the following: increase parking, provide all identified scope of work items, achieve ADA compliance. And then we would, we had promised to come back to you to review any revised drawings and maps prior to sending to DCNR and DCED for approval. So we did provide an enclosed drawing for your review that has been prepared by the township engineer, Pittcock Engineering, that that attempts to accomplish the the listed tasks. So the following summarizes the key features of the plan. There's two pickleball courts near the, near the expanded parking area and the existing pickleball, I'm sorry, basketball court. The pickleball courts will include extra fencing and a shade structure to minimize effects to any neighboring properties. The township will pursue noise mitigation options in accordance with DCNR recommendations. There's a quarter mile paved walkway surrounding the soccer field. This is eight foot wide, and it provides an outdoor exercise facility as well as connection to the park facilities. They will be ADA compliant. 2,000 square foot nature play area is shown on the plans. The township can use this area to construct play areas. And we're in the process of evaluating options for equipment that would meet the intent of this of this section. Park signs will be added and or upgraded for the project. And then we will also create eight additional parking spaces to accommodate the proposed new features. An existing PO already is in effect for the engineering work of that amount, which was 77,000 originally budgeted. 34,347 remains to be spent. We are currently on pace to be on budget. I wanted to get the feedback from the Board of Commissioners. Do you have any questions, comments? Are we headed in the right direction?
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate you mentioning the noise mitigation and fencing with pickleball, take into account the impact for the neighbors. So thank you. I don't have any questions. Any comment from the board at this point?
My only comment was going to be noise mitigation as well, but thanks for addressing that.
Commissioner Osborne?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Is there any nighttime lighting envisioned at all? Or is daylight activity only?
It would be daylight activity only.
Okay, and that that is part of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to weigh in, too. I actually heard from a resident about the vistas. She had concern about double parking on Chapman's. And she felt that coming out of Handler Way, looking to the right, there was poor view because of the parking. So I'm sure with the extra parking, that will definitely help. But Commissioner Osborne, she also brought up the poor lighting. And when the cars are parked on Chapman's, if you're coming from Bluebourn, there's some poor pedestrian visibility that she felt was, should be addressed. So I'm bringing it to your attention. And also, the same resident did ask that we consider to put a path in because sometimes people walk their dogs. They don't always clean up. So when you have families with strollers or people just walking on the path, it provides a safer and clean area for them to...
And we are providing a path. Tony, I guess my, what would your comments be concerning the the other, the other comments?
There shouldn't be additional parking on Chapman's for this, for this. We figure everything would be on closer, but I do know, just from being in that area, that people that play soccer in the lower field do park on Chapman's. So I think what we can do independently is take a look at what site distance are coming out of that road, see if there needs to be some more painted yellow curves that the Public Works could do, you know, or signage for restricted parking in certain areas, just so that there's adequate site distance. We could, we could easily take a look at that, kind of independent of this, just to make sure, you know, that gets done quickly.
Sounds good.
Very good. Excellent. No other comment from the board? Any public comment? Nothing online? No. Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item 12B. We have State Route 22 update, and Chief Dorney will be presenting.
This is in reference to the concerns brought up to the Public Safety Commission due to some recent accidents on State Route 22 and or 78 that increases the traffic flow through the township. I reached out to Captain Derek Cuck of the Pennsylvania State Police Troop M, Bethlehem Barracks. He's the commander of Troop M, and expressed the concerns. And essentially, through our conversation, they have the same frustrations we do. It turns out that the opinion is that the roadway was built in probably specs for 1950s, 1960s traffic, has not really increased much over the years. And now we're facing 2023, and it's not necessarily a speeding issue, but it's more of an overcrowding issue. And they will do some internal meetings to determine what kind of methods they can take to try to address the problems. But they face the same frustrations as us. Their troopers can't get places when the roadways shut down, and they have limited access to get that traffic off the roadway. So but they're aware of it. They're going to have some internal meetings to discuss to see what they can do to help us.
Excellent, Chief. Thank you for that update. I guess one of the questions that I think about, I know there was another accident yesterday right here in South Whitehall with the box truck into the back of a tractor trailer, is is it something, might the township send a letter to our state legislators or even to our federal representatives to let them know that we've got these recurring accidents that are certainly causing an economic...
I would think it certainly can't help. If we can, we can push any kind of, you know, roadway improvements through the state, the more pressure they feel, hopefully it would bump that up on the list. But it's, you know, I travel it as frequently as I have to. I try to avoid it as much as possible. There are certain times during the day that I have to jump on 22 to get in thoughts to a separate part of the township that's a little bit quicker. It's never, Route 22 is never the quicker option. It is always congested. You know, unfortunately, we're in the the day and age where you see people texting on the phone on Route 22, and it just turns into distracted drivers that with that much traffic congestion, one little mistake creates gridlock for everybody. And I think that's what we're facing, is the antiquated roadways that that quite frankly, aren't built for the specs and the traffic flows that we face today.
Thank you. I appreciate the state police comment as well, you know, and yours of the roads being antiquated and not able to handle the volume. And I know that PennDOT probably has a schedule for when they're planning to upgrade. But if we, as a municipality, even potentially with our neighbors, sent a letter in and just asked them to review, and maybe they could accelerate the timeline a little bit or...
Yeah, it affects everybody. I mean, I remember when I was still with the city of Valentine when Route 78 at either South Fourth Street or Lehigh Street or Amace Avenue, with any kind of crashes where they'd have to divert traffic, it just turned into a nightmare for the city as well. So any corridor near an exit off of one of those major roadways when they have a major crash just creates gridlock for everybody. So it is something that hopefully in the future, PennDOT can look at some of the alternate routes and or ways to get our high traffic flows through smoother and a safer operation would be best.
Thank you. I don't want to monopolize the time. Are there any other comments?
Whatever can be done. Not getting any better, certainly.
I like your comment about writing to our our state officials. Do we do that as a board or how would you, we go forward with that?
Tom, is that something that you would suggest that you might be able to draft something on behalf of the board to...
Yeah, I could certainly do that on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Public Safety was also going to address something to either us or to us and or to them.
Yes, I believe John France just did that today.
Yeah.
Is there no other board comment? Any public comment? Moving on to old business, we have none tonight. Onto courtesy of the floor, anybody here? Sure, come on up and give us your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. On February 1st, I addressed this board about the lack of a speed limit sign that was eliminated and lack of pavement markings that haven't been reinstalled on Eck Road. I was told they were working on a timeline with a developer that was, I guess, responsible for a township road. Where are we?
The striping is being conducted this Friday.
Okay. What about the speed limit sign?
I don't know that we have that yet, do we?
I was told all the signs were ordered, and they were just waiting to come in.
Okay. So I just sent a video to the Board of Commissioners showing the activities of cars on Eck Road speeding and passing each other in front of my house. Today, my wife had to jump out from in front of the mailbox because a truck had a swerve out of the way of two cars speeding down the road and passing each other. This is a fucking daily occurrence. Pardon my language. And I don't know why this township prioritizes the convenience of developers over the safety of our citizens. February 1st to April 19th, and nothing has been done. This project has cost my family $57,248.26 in damages that I've had to fix for a developer that refuses to buy a speed limit sign. And now, who put the manhole cover or inlet, or whatever they call it, this week across the road? Was that the township that did that?
That was the developer.
Why are there holes drilled through the surface of the road? That doesn't seem like quality construction when you have water just ripping out. Eventually, there's one half inch holes.
In the manhole covers?
No, on the surface of the road next to it.
I know, I will go take a look at it, but they do have to work on those manholes. They are still waiting for some 26 inch risers.
Well, this one is sealed and everything.
Okay, and I will address that.
So I just don't... So I just don't understand how a developer can control a township road like that and make it unsafe. I don't understand. And the ceiling of the road, this is all over my yard. It gets flung off the car. You know what this does to a lawnmower spindle? I'll tell you what, it destroys it. I destroyed this last weekend. Because of this stuff, it's all over the place. Now it's probably all shredded from my lawnmower. I don't understand. I honestly don't. And I don't expect an answer, because I don't get responses. My email is blocked by certain individuals of this township that I try to communicate with. So that's why the email only went to the five elected officials. Thank you.
Are you saying who's blocked?
My emails blocked? No one has ever blocked any emails.
I don't even know, Brian, I don't even know how to block an email. Hold on, hold on. When there was a Munis upgrade, are you sure it does not say Omnicore on the end of it? It says .com? Because Greg Adams has that problem also. When he sends it out, I get that update.
We would receive any, we would receive your emails. Have you tried to send me an email? When? Yeah, we can address that from a technical standpoint, but no one has blocked your email address.
We would never do that.
Forward us the, what gets returned. Good point.
Well, how about it this, if you print them out tomorrow?
Thank you.
I will be out front of your house to check that manhole at 7:30 in the morning.
Well, I'll suggest...
Okay, I'll make it convenient for you. I'll be there. What time do you have to leave to get to work?
Well, I have a...
Well, Brian, if you want to...
I will drop it off at the Township.
Okay, I'll gladly be there, so it's no inconvenience to you, because I'm going to check that out anyways.
I live 1.1 miles from this.
Okay.
And I work on that side, so.
No problem.
I apologize for my abusive language earlier, but my wife has put up with a lot, and she has wanted to move multiple times because of everything that has gone on, especially with the money that, you know, I don't understand why a citizen, you know, the stormwater has still not been addressed on my driveway. The subsurface of the driveway has now deteriorated to the point where it's affecting the foundation of my garage. So I don't know how much that's going to cost when that gets fixed. So it just compounds, and the developer, they speak a good game in a public meeting, but then they disappear. I don't know. I don't know. But the cars passing each other, when you see the video, just think of it as if it was out in front of your house, and what you would think. And that's a slower video, because the only reason that video was caught by my camera is because I was walking out the front of that house, so it triggered the thing. I don't have it triggering cars on the road, because then I had nothing but continuous video. That's why I knew the exact time that that happened. But it's a daily occurrence between 6:00 and 7:00 in the evening, and 6:30 and 8:00. And it only happens for when a certain warehouse goes up and leaves, and they have different hours, because, I guess, depending on workload. So you can't have a cop there, or a police officer, because he'd be spending, or he or she would be spending... I mean, to capture something that happens within a three-minute window is not practical. But pavement markings are, and I'm glad that they're going to be, I say this tongue-in-cheek, I'm glad they're going to be put in, but I've heard that the road is going to be repaved, and my driveway is going to be fixed last year this time, by June of, or July of last year. And nothing's happened.
We are to the final stages of working with Norfolk Southern, so that work, it was slated to begin when...
I don't understand why I, I don't work for Norfolk Southern. My property was owned by Norfolk Southern.
My understanding with that is, is you didn't want blue rock on your property, correct?
Yeah.
So they're going to try to use the contractor they're using for Norfolk Southern, so that they're not using blue rock for your property?
Okay, but they've done other work on my property without blue rock being involved at all, when they had Schlaugh pay the first half. So, anyway, that's a whole logistical nightmare, I understand. And I know everybody's frustrated, especially me and the township, how this project has rolled out. I was listening to the other warehouse that started after these warehouses, and most of their improvements are done. I just, I have to wonder about Blackstreet Group, or Aries Management, or whatever you're calling themselves, this week's commitment to this township and the safety of their community in which they operate. And once again, I apologize for my language earlier, but it's very frustrating after 37 months of this. We know end in sight. I shouldn't say end in sight, but slow end in sight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And your concerns are noted, and we'll have staff follow up as needed. And I'll get that video forwarded. It sounds like it didn't get to your email. I will send it.
I wonder, was it if it was too large? Maybe? I don't know.
No, he's saying it's multiple emails he has tried to send. I think it's coming up as that Omnicore, like we had the issue with after the Munis update, like Greg gets when he sends one sometimes. I get that alert. I believe he's using the wrong one, but I'm not 100% sure till we see that.
Well, for the record, we don't block resident emails from anyone.
No, we would never do that.
Thank you for confirming that. I'm very sorry, well, he left before I could say that. I'm sorry for the frustration he's gone through, and anything that staff can do to work within what we are by law able to assist. I know a lot of it has to do with the warehouses themselves as a private entity, but thank you to staff that's been working throughout this. Anyone else from the public that would like to approach the board? Anyone online? Moving on to agenda item 15, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. There is no executive session this evening. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.